Okay, welcome to the December 1st Ordinance Committee meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which is one nation,
one nation. Into the vulnerable, deliver dignity and justice for all.
Cheryl Anne, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, good evening. Okay, we can't let's start. We'll go alphabetical. Counselor Fishbein.
Here.
Counselor Laffin.
Here.
Counselor Marone.
Here.
Counselor Morganstein.
Here.
Counselor Tata.
Here.
Counselor Testa.
Here.
Counselors Andry.
Here.
Chairman Servoni.
Here.
And Chairman Shertel.
Here, thank you. I'll move on to item two, approval of minutes from our September 3rd, 2020 meeting. I make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Motion, motion then seconded by Chairman Servoni, discussion. All in favor?
I.
Opposed abstentions, the motion carries. Item three, discussion and possible action on the cap and non amendment to chapter forty-six, reserve accounts, article two. So, a very quick recap. On this one, because we did have, you know, a public hearing at one of our November town council meetings on this and while the public had no comment on it, Counselor Fishbein, and it almost physically hurts me to say this, but he was correct when he noted that the language that we were looking at really wasn't as specific as it needed to be or as didn't necessarily specifically reflect the intent of what we were trying to accomplish. What we were trying to accomplish simply was to get kind of a standing report on the disposition of the cap and non recurring account. We had gotten that information this past April prior, just prior to the budget work workshops. And it was helpful to us and it's really just a data point and it's information that's out there, but it's not easily. It's not always easy to define parts of it are in the CAFR, but there are, there was stuff in the annual report, or I'm sorry, the monthly report. But what I'm going to direct you to in your backup, if you go to page eleven in your backup, and by page eleven, I mean, if you have a PDF view and it says eleven or fourteen, that's the page you should be on. It's an email that I had sent to the town clerk back on November twenty-fourth. This is the revised language in this email that we are considering. And before I open it up, just a, just another, well, I want to go through this, but I just want to preface this also by saying I did have a conversation with Jimbo's earlier today. He has no issue with any of this. There's one part that I'd like to bring up that he and I talked over quickly. Really, you know, he doesn't see anything in here that is onerous for him to do, you know? So, it was a good conversation that we had. So, I'm just going to pause. Are there any questions so far? Why, why we're here, where we are, how we got here? I'll take that as a no. Okay, so.
I did. Chairman Shertel, I did utilize the chat function and I did indicate that I had a comment.
Yes, please come. I didn't see that. Sorry, I'm not even, I'm not used to, I'm not watching the chat. I'm not used to this.
We need a good vice chair to help you with that kind of stuff.
Well, that would be.
So, I, I look forward to hearing what in detail Mr. Bo's suggested was not in here. Perhaps if we added, shall provide at a minimum the town council with, and that way it sets a floor but not a ceiling. And, and with that, I mean, I'd like to make a motion to approve the language. And that way you have something to go with, because I'm happy with what we have before us.
Yeah, I mean, I'll second the motion, because I'm happy with it. He, he didn't know what he said was, we just spoke about the last bullet. And this is why I sent the email I sent about twenty minutes ago to the council. This information in the last bullet, we already receive on a monthly basis, which is something that, in fact, you'll see the note in here is my wording, because I noted that as I was writing the bullet. I thought to myself, well, I already get this every month, and that's what I sent to all of you. And what I sent is the monthly financial report that is public, that the council gets every month. And in that report, and this, you know, I'm not going to share my screen, because I have to restart, go to meeting. But basically, there is a listing in that report of cap and non projects, the date they were initiated, the amount that was spent, the amount that's encumbered and the amount that's available. So, we already get that. And so that's why the Mr. Bo's suggestion, and he had a, just he had a family matter, that's why he's not here, just so you guys are aware. He just, he just didn't think that last bullet was necessary, because we already get it. That was really his only comment on this proposal. He, that was why, so go ahead.
With that, when you're saying the last bullet.
No, I was the second last bullet. Sorry, there's a, there's a gap. My apologies. The bullet that reads all incomplete cap and non projects, date of original approval, amount of unexpended funds, that bullet is the one I'm talking about.
Okay, with, with that in mind, I totally understand. And, you know, you've stated a bunch of times that we already get it. I responded to that. I'm comfortable with the language and, you know, I think we, we go.
So you, what are you saying? You don't want to take that out, or you do want to take it out?
I don't care. It does nothing for me. I mean, all I care about is the data.
Yeah.
I, I care that it's in one place. I care that we get it at a certain time of year. If somebody wants to qualify it with, you already get it somewhere else, fine. I, I'm not going to dicker over it.
All right, that's, that's, it's a Christmas miracle. Um, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Counselor Marone.
So, you know, to Craig's point, though, he says it's nice to have it all in one place. I just feel like this, it would be easy enough for him to, to add the page from our monthly report to the report that we get in February, if that's all we need to say. So it is nice to have it all in one place, in one document.
That, that's fine. If that's, if that's what the council wants, I, I don't, I'm not going, you know, that's fine. I think I just did want to make the point, we do get it already. So if it's in one place, if that makes, obviously that makes it easier for us. So I, we can leave it as is. Are there any other questions from the council on this language? Chairman Servoni, in terms of a timeline, we can't post this for another public hearing really till January, because of the five days, five day rule. I guess my question for the, for you, for the council, but more for you, just from a process perspective, do we need, does this need to come back to ordinance, or we, if we're good with the language?
No, if you're set with the language, then you just refer it to the council for approval. And for the first January meeting, we'll set it for a public hearing.
Got it. Okay, Attorney Small. I neglected to call your name and we didn't ask you if you were here, but thanks to. You know you're here, so I'm sorry.
I don't mind being anonymous.
How we need you. I just wanted, I wanted to touch base with you, because I don't know if this language needs to be wordsmithed for all of, you know, the, to fit into the vernacular of the, of the code.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would put it in a format for you. I wouldn't look, I don't know that I would tweakness, but anything, it pretty much would be as is, but I'll format it for you in terms of inserting it into the ordinance. But I, I'm not really clear. So is the note in that bullet staying or no? You take the note out, right?
Take the note out. The note was my commentary.
It's just right. That's informational, but you don't need that in the ordinance, right?
We don't need that in the ordinance, because it's, it's already right. That's correct.
Okay, I can format that for you.
Okay, thank you. All right, well then, if there's no other, other discussion from the council, I will open it up to the public for any public comment. If you are out there, just please state your name and address. You can also go into the chat box and indicate that you'd like to weigh in. And seeing nothing or hearing nothing, I bring it back to the council. Cheryl Anne, could you please call the roll on this motion to approve this amendment?
Yes, again, we'll go alphabetical. Counselor Fishbein.
Yeah.
Counselor Laffin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marone.
Yes, my apologies. Can you get to the mic fast enough?
Counselor Morganstein.
Yes.
Counselor Tata.
Yes.
Counselor Testa.
Yes.
Counselors Andry.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes.
Chairman Shertel.
Yes, thank you. So we will refer this to our first January meeting. All right, moving right along, item four, discussion and possible action on chapter one thirty-nine littering. So this is an item that Counselors Andry brought to us in the fall. And I believe where we left off was there was some language needed from Attorney Small to sync up what we wanted to do locally with what the state already has. And then I think we also were looking at what the dollar amount for the fine was going to be. That's my recollection. So I don't, Attorney Small, I give it, I'll give it to you at this point.
Okay, actually, I had thought that I would have a draft for you by now, but I kind of got distracted, because I thought that I could make an argument that we didn't need to give a warning. And so I really kind of spent some time focusing on that to no avail. But, so I do have a draft that I've been working on. And one of the issues that you discussed, you wanted to have a lot of teeth in this fine. As I, you may recall that you go up to a thousand dollars. So in my, in the draft that I'm working on, I just want to get your feedback. I started off with five hundred for the first, seven fifty for the second. And subsequent to that, it's a thousand each time. And I consider one cubic foot, each one cubic foot of solid waste to be a separate offense. I don't know if you want it tougher than that, or does that work for you? But however you wish, up to a thousand dollars is allowable. I will tell you that the ordinance will not reference the infraction statute, doesn't have to reference that. But the fraction is a much, much, much smaller fine, which you have to share with the state for Connecticut. So, you know, we're really looking for this part, the ordinance to be the part with the teeth. But I really would like to get your feedback on how you want the fine structured, and then I can finalize this for you.
Okay, thank you for that, that Counselor Fishbein. You had a question, you have questions.
Yes, I guess for Janice, you know, I'm a little concerned about creating an ordinance that we can't effectuate. So let's say that somebody fills up the trash at a receptacle at Doolittle Park. They are seen, they are given a warning. Now, is that warning just with regard to illegally putting trash in that receptacle at Doolittle Park? You know, does that mean that they can then go to another park in town at a different receptacle? How does this work?
No, I, I don't think so. I think it'd be the, it's because the ordinance is going to say that any receptacle on town property, including streets meant to really capture litter or the waste you generate while in a park. So if you have a picnic that way. So I'm actually, my, the draft that I'm working on starts with that discussion and tells you what it is. So in, in your scenario, if they go to another park and do the same thing, I would consider that, that the next defense, at which point they can be fined.
Okay. And have we had input from like any town department that has been able to identify, repeat offenders, that kind of stuff? I'm just, I don't, I don't know that we're ever going to catch anybody in the net, quite frankly.
Well, I actually talked to the police chief about it, and unrelated to this draft ordinance, he did get a complaint from a private business that someone was depositing their personal waste there, in their dumpster, and they did actually track it down to that person. So, but he seemed to think that that was something, I mean, obviously, it's not going to be a perfect system, but he seemed to think that that was something that can actually be done. You know, unfortunately, with the warning, I think the warning is the problem. And that's why I've spent all this time trying to find a way, do I really have to put the warning in? Because it's not this ordinance, not to get into the legal technical, but this ordinance would be under the specific statute as opposed to seven dash one forty-eight. So I, the cycle then, because seven one forty-eight says if you create general ordinance and the basis of the power is listed in one's seven dash one forty-eight, you have to have the warning. Well, our, this statute is very specific, and I was kind of leaning towards, well, maybe I don't need the warning then. I haven't found anything to support my position. I'm just going to look a little bit more. But at this point, I'm thinking I have to put the warning in. I think that, to me, that's the biggest hurdle on this.
So, yeah, no, and I totally agree, because you got to get somebody twice. You know, and that's, I'm concerned. Is it possible to, to re-characterize the activity? You know, it's, it's, it's a public nuisance, quite frankly. You know, are we given a heightened ability to do something if we by ordinance deem something a public nuisance?
You're not going to get the thousand dollar fine.
Well, do we have to do the warrant?
You're not even going to get close. You're going to be back at whatever seven one, seven dash one forty-eight said, which I think is still a hundred, isn't it?
Yeah, but, you know, I think that, and I, you know, I interested to hear what others have to say, but, you know, if it's the first instance and somebody gets whacked with a hundred dollar penalty, that may have more deterrent possibility than having to find somebody twice and, you know, get to a heightened level.
Well, so you're, you're saying cite him as an infraction?
Yeah.
Well, then you're getting into the, then you get into the state schedule of fines. So, and I mean, in terms of the money, half, at least half of it goes to the state, which is not, but that's the end of the world. But, you know, I thought the goal, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree that, you know, it's really with the warning. I think perhaps one way to maybe address it is to have, at least in certain places, some type of signage on the receptacle saying, this is a thousand dollar fine if you deposit that in here. We don't have to, that sign doesn't have to say that you get a warning first. But I do think the fact that it is possible to determine who the person is, it's not the end of the world that a warning has to be given first, but that's why, but I was trying to do it without it. So, I mean, it's not going to be a perfect system. But I do, I do think that you can catch people doing it, because people tend to not realize that perhaps they shouldn't have identifying information in their trash.
Well, that's another question. Who's empowered with going through the trash to ascertain whether or not there's return address labels?
Well, we own the receptacle. It's not your, when you deposit your trash into our property, it's not, I don't think we have an issue with that.
Yeah, so now, somebody for Public Works is going to be empowered with determining whether or not, I mean, I can see at the roadside, you know, I see it at North Arm's reservoir. You know, there's not receptacles there except in the picnic area, and people leave bags there. So now Public Works gets a call to pick up the bags. They're going to be charged with going through that trash to ascertain the culprit?
No, I, I think actually at that point, I think that they're going to have to say, this is someone dumping their trash in our property. I think they are going to have to call the police at that point. Or unless somebody else is designated as the enforcement officer. But, you know, in talking to the chief, he did not think that that was something that they, you know, he thought that that was something that they in fact could do, in fact have done in the past.
Well, I mean, I just, are we being told that the local police department is going to be going through the trash to ascertain?
I'm saying if we, whoever is in charge of the enforcement, which could be the police and could be another individual appointed, you could have someone else appointed to do that. The only way to decipher whose trash it is, so whoever has the authority to issue the citation is going to be the one to make that determination.
Unless we appropriate money to perhaps put trail cameras on the area that's most frequently this bad stuff.
Because that's not, that's not me.
But ultimately, the purpose here from my perspective is to stop it, to curtail it, and not to raise money. So, that's all that I had. I look forward to whatever other comments my fellow counselors have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselors Andry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, when I, when I brought this up, you know, originally, I, I had a couple, a couple of different thought processes in mind. And so, you know, one of them, the reason I'm looking for the initial, or my opinion was, the initial thing should be a warning, is because you may catch some really innocent scenarios. You know, you could have a, a family stopped at, at Dutton Park or Dutton parts of bags, in Harrison Park, and they could just be picking up some stuff in their car and throwing it in a bag and then throwing it in a receptacle. I wouldn't want anybody to get pinched for that, especially if they didn't know. Um, the signage is there, they could think about it for a second, they could look at the bag, go, is this a cubic foot or not? And then throw it in or not. But what we're really trying to do is, is the obvious and blatant dumping. So it's kind of go to the point of, how do we know and who is doing this? Public Works has gotten calls from you. This is how brazen it is. That there are overflowing trash pails at particular parts, pregnant as one example. Public Works will go out there and dump it, and I've had a Public Works truck still in the area see the person across the street who made the phone call that the receptacles were full, walk across the street with their kitchen bag and stick it in a receptacle. That's the type of stuff that we want to get. Do we want to get that? Because it costs us money. Public Works is going back to these receptacles over and over again to dump them. That's our people's time, taxpayers are paying for. We also have to dispose of all of this stuff. That's, that's when it's organized and left in or near a pail. All the other stuff is even worse, when it's just dumped and rotting and collecting water and rusting out on the side of the road somewhere. So that's even worse, too. That's why I really wanted to have the teeth in it, because there are people up to this point that are like, it's twenty-five dollars to take an air conditioner to, to the, the collection site. If I could have it fall off the back of my truck, that's free. Now they have to weigh that against the five hundred dollar fine. These are the types of things that, that I'm trying to get out of all this. You're right. I, I'm not looking at this as, as a moneymaker or revenue stream. It's supposed to be a deterrent, but I wanted it to be a strong enough deterrent, so that people were, were impacted if they were going to continue to do this. So, I, I'm, I'm good collectively if we decide to go without any type of a warning type system, or, you know, like a first, first pass, you didn't know ignorance of the law, you, whatever, you get a pass one time. I don't want to, I don't want to nail people accidentally, but I definitely want, I didn't want to be, I've been a pretty big advocate of this over the years. I can't stand ordinances that we can't enforce or do something with, because it's just like, it's like a feel-good thing. Hey, let's, let's put this on the books that we got no way to do it, especially now that we've got this, this entire segment of the police coming up now to do these day-to-day things hand in hand with the health department. This, to me, is a great segue right into that. There's going to be a, a, a set of, of individuals that are going to be able to handle these nuisance-type things. And, and I'd like to be able to address some of them. So that was really where my thought process was when I brought all of this up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that.
Thank you, Counselor Morganstein. Gina, I think you're on mute.
There, is that better? Thank you, sorry. Okay, yes, well, I was not at the last meeting, so I do not have some of the background. So, to the question of if I see the sign, didn't know it was an issue, and I've collected what's in my car, what is a cubic foot of garbage? Is it a little shopping bag from Stop &amp; Shop? Is it, do we have an idea? We're, we're asking to.
Yeah, good question.
I mean, I think if we're putting up a sign that says you shouldn't be putting more than a cubic foot of garbage, I, I don't know how much that is. Yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody? Is it a foot by a foot by a foot by a foot?
Yeah, it is that.
By a foot.
And, you know, the, the, the cubic, the cubic foot, square foot comes in play in order to find people. The ordinance will actually say, you're not supposed, you're not supposed to be putting your household waste in town receptacles, period. And that's what, that's, that's the starting point. You get fined if it's by statute, one cubic foot of waste or more.
So this is the statute. So is the sign that the family is seeing in the park on the garbage pail going to read the whole statute, or just, I mean, I think that's part of the question is, what are people going to be seeing on the public space who aren't privy to knowing that there's an ordinance?
Well, one, people are supposed to know, you're not, we don't have to put an ordinance on a town receptacle. You could put, I think it's more of a deterrent, to put a sign saying it's subject to a one thousand dollar fine of some sort. I'm not sure why anyone should think that they could deposit their household or business waste into a town receptacle. But there would be, so, I mean, I would encourage there to be some signage, but we have all kinds of ordinances. We don't, you know, you're presumed to, to know what the laws are. So, and especially in this case, you're getting a warning in the first instance. So at that point, you're not fined until, and you will have noticed before you're fined, so.
Well, and I think that's part of the discussion, is should there just be a smaller fine first? Or should there be a warning? Yeah, I think the warning idea. And then the second piece that came up in hearing the questions to my mind is, is just the thought of community policing. I was very impressed with the letter from the South Main Street resident, and it sounds like things were gotten on top of very much today already by the police. I, I'm sorry, I see blight and several other things coming into my mind of their usefulness ahead, perhaps of this. But again, I wasn't at a last meeting, and maybe the flavor of the room, I'm feeling differently from others. But what I'm hearing leads me to think that people are kind of all in with this. And when Jason brings it up as something that we'd like to see our community policing working on, I, I think I see a lot of bigger issues prior to this. Although in this town that does not have public garbage pickup, public usage of public garbage cans is a significant thing that we certainly have. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Testa, because he hasn't weighed in yet, and then I'll go back to Counselors Fishbein and Andry. So Counselor Testa.
Thank you. Excuse my stuff, I just took a bite of something.
I threw you with that, didn't I? Sorry about that.
Good, I made, I made a fried dough pizza.
I can go to Craig. You could have like a lot of time to eat that if you want. I can go right to Craig.
No, I'm okay. I'll just hold it on the camera. You won't see me chewing. I have an odd question. I don't recall exactly what the ordinance specifies for somebody who dumps a bag of garbage willy-nilly anywhere. Isn't it fifty dollars? So what I'm, here's an odd, an odd eventuality here. Somebody sees that they can't put their garbage bag in the receptacle, because they might get charged a hundred or five hundred dollars. So they say the hell with it, just throw it on the ground somewhere. Isn't that a far less of a fine, or am I misreading the, the littering ordinance? Shouldn't we make sure we have both of them in, in line? That's what I'm really kind of getting at.
Understood. I'm going to rely on Attorney Small to respond to that.
Yeah, I am reviewing the whole ordinance as I do this to see if other things need to be updated or in line with that, to the extent that it can be. But the thousand dollar fine is, is a specific thing by statute, but I am checking all the other provisions of the ordinance to see where they all fall, and you'll see them in the draft when I give it to you.
Because I don't recall us, um, I might have to check the ordinance again. I don't recall specifying a bag of trash versus something thrown out the window.
No, I think it's like littering and dumping.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a ninety dollar fine for some of that, so. When I, when I give you the draft, I'll show you what. when I, when I give you the draft, I'll show you what you can do on those other provisions and you can decide what you want to do.
Okay, just wanted to bring that up. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fishbine. Craig, you're on mute.
Yep, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Janice, about this one cubic, um, foot situation. I'm going through the state statutes and I, I can't tell how they ascertain that. So, you know, we, years ago, I mean, because when we have enforcement here, somebody's got to be able to ascertain that you're in violation. So, you know, trash compacters, which we don't see a lot of these days, you know, can, can get trash into a small little brick. Um, you know, how is the important, whether it be Public Works or the police, going to be able ascertain one cubic foot? I mean, what, what tool, what methodology? Cause I see nothing in state statute. We're gonna give them a box? We're gonna have them step on it, compact the stuff into the box to figure out if it's over? I don't know, because I'm.
Yeah, I have to discuss that with the experts, but certainly if you deposit your entire kitchen, so a, a standard kitchen bag is what 13 gallons for a small one? So that's gotta be, it's gotta be more than a cubic foot, I would think. So, I mean, obviously it is probably gonna have to be some judgment, but I'll, I'll, I'll ask the experts what they think about how you would measure one square cubic foot of trash.
Well, is it possible?
If somebody's gonna do that, you know, if they're doing smaller stuff than a standard kitchen bag or even the, what 36 gallon bags, if they try to do something, that's kind of obvious. So really it's something less than that. And the question is, would you be chasing something less than that anyway? Um, I mean, if it's less than a kitchen bag full of garbage or is it gonna be in a bag at all? It may be loose. I mean, I, it's, it's not gonna be a perfect system.
No, I know. And Jason gave the example of the person at Pregnant Park, you know, bringing, I guess, a single bag over. You know, if I was charged with defending that individual, I would say, well, we can get it into the one cubic foot box. And therefore my client's not in violation, go away.
I don't think a third, if it was a standard kitchen bag and it was full, I don't think there's gonna be a problem demonstrating that that's a cubic foot. But I will ask Public Works and even the chief what they think of that.
Do we?
Not saying, it's a legitimate question as to how do you, you know, do you know it when you see it? I don't know. And we'll have to ask that question.
Do we know how other towns deal with this?
They just repeat the language of the statute essentially. That's what I found. It's, it's, nobody's got, you know, they haven't defined it any differently. They're just really citing the statute and saying if you do that, you're fined. And actually, a lot of the ordinances say up to $1,000. I think you have to actually pick which one you want to find them in the ordinance, so.
Okay.
I'll work on it.
The number is not as much concern as enforceability and compliance.
Yeah, well, we talked about it last time. It's not about making money, but I think that some of you thought it was such a, it was an important issue enough that the fine needed to be significant enough to know, to tell people, we don't want you doing this. That's all. Not, not to make money.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselors Zandry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so you know, I kind of just want to add on to a couple of these points, too. I, you, you're trying to strike that balance. So you know, like, like, you know, Counselor Fishbine said, you know, if, if it's a kitchen bag and it's only half-full and it's got a lot of papers in it, can I crush it down? I mean, really, we, we want to get it to a point where it can't be, you know, lawyered away. I mean, people have got to admit, they, they understand what they're doing. They're taking their trash and they're putting it into a town receptacle. Now, to, to some of these other points, this is why I want to also make this broad enough. If they decide, well, I'm, I'm gonna get in trouble if I place it into the receptacle, so I'll just leave it on the ground alongside of it. I, I, that needs, that's still to me littering. And I wanted it to try to be bundled up under this same thing. The same is true as far as I'm concerned. And again, it might be too broad for this one ordinance. If somebody is going into somebody else's dumpster, there's a sign on the dumpster, you know, no public dumping and the people do it anyway. What's my recourse as, as the owner of the dumpster? I, I've got none. It's, and, and it's okay to a degree when my dumpster is half-full and they tip it. And, and you know, if I'm supposed to have no more than 400 pounds in it and there's 320 pounds, it's really not that big a deal. The problem becomes when they put paint cans in it and when they're putting a bunch of mail in it and they're putting a turpentine container in it. I have to pick that stuff out on top of maybe getting a fine when the, when the hauler takes it away. As a business owner or as, as, you know, a condominium complex, it's got a dumpster out back and somebody else is throwing stuff in it. And, and this is, this is the crux of what's going on. And there's a lot of it. And, and this also goes to all kinds of other things that we're dealing with. Couches being put on the sides of the road by the tenant at some, someplace because they're getting rid of it. They put the freeze sign on and it's there for a week. And then the raccoon makes a home out of it. And these, these are things we're chasing all the time. And because there's no teeth in anything other than a nasty grant from the health department, it's very hard to move these people along. The fear of a fine is supposed to get more of these people in the line. They don't care otherwise. I'm, I'm just trying to, to strike the balance between honestly catching somebody who's totally oblivious at incident of cleaning out their car and somebody that knows they're crossing the street with, with, with a glad trash bag. They know that they're dumping into a town receptacle. Or worse, pull it into the train station on, on, uh, North Turn, uh, North, um, uh, North Colony. The dumpster's right there next door. They walk across the barrier and they dump the stuff in broad daylight. They know they're not supposed to be doing that. They do it because what's, what's gonna happen to them? Nothing. They get caught, someone yells at them, throws a rock at their car. As the owner of the dumpster, they're irritated and they do that. Other than that, nothing else happens and they continue to do it or they go elsewhere and do it. There, without the fine, there's no, there's no way to get any enforcement behind it. And there are other people that are getting subject to this. The town, the taxpayers, the independent owner of the dumpster, the, the person that's picking up the garbage in front of their property or whatever the case might be. Again, that, this was really the sentiment of bringing all this.
And you know, just like, no, I mean, in terms of private property, they can, someone can be charged with an infraction for doing that. So that is under state law now. And there are town ordinances that, excuse me, um, that actually do include dumping on, on private property. I could take another look at that to see if that's something that you're interested in. But they can be. So when they, when I asked the chief the question, you knew exactly what I was talking about because it is also an infraction to do that on private property, not just public property, but also on private property.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Chairman Seroni.
Hey, I just want to say I'm generally supportive. Um, there are plenty of laws on the books that we don't have to put signs up before we enforce. Uh, Attorney Small said, we're presumed to know the law. Um, the point of the cubic foot i- is not to create an enforceable threshold, it's to create the next level. It's, the, the first fine is up to a cubic foot. When you exceed the cubic foot, your fine is doubling. And if you, if you exceed it twice, then your fine is tripling. So that, that's the point of the measurement. As for the absurdity of measurements, we have police officers trained to operate, uh, noise measuring machines. We have police officers trained to operate scales to weigh drugs. So for them to use a ruler to determine, you know, what a cubic foot is, I don't think is outside the realm of reason. Um, and as far as, you know, wha- what we choose to enforce in terms of quality of life, there are some people, as much as I am supportive of those who live in the Doolittle Park neighborhood and they want to use their park, they, they should be offended about what's going on, about what we're hearing in public. But at the same time, there are a lot of people who are unaffected by what's going on in Doolittle Park, but are affected by litter. So, you know, I, I, I think this is a, a good direction. I think it's something important. I think it's a quality of life issue for a lot of people in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Small, are you getting what you need? Cause I'm trying to go back to what you asked us about. Um, Craig, hold on one sec. I see your comment. But you asked for feedback on the warning. You asked, so I guess are you hearing what you need to hear or do we want to?
Yes. Yes, I think I'm, I'm good. And I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna, I'll put language and obviously you, it's subject to, to your review. So, um, I may give you, maybe I give you more than one alternative on how to structure the, the fines and you can fill in some blanks. So I think, um, pretty good. And I will, I will take a look at, and I have been taking a look at the entire ordinance to see if it all works with this also.
Okay. Um, Craig, she, she said she was good, Craig. So what else do you need to add here?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to try and work out the loophole that I recognize, um, could be brought up here. Perhaps if that threshold is described as a dumping that takes up at least one cubic foot of space, then you don't have the argument that that dumping can be compacted. When you, when you say one cubic foot of material, one could argue that that can be contracted. Let's see, Benny's got that furrow brow. But if we say that the dumping takes up one cubic foot of space, then you, you eliminate that potential argument.
If I may?
Sure.
Always. I, I really want to know the person who has a trash compactor in their house and is gonna go take it and, and dump it on a, in a public waste disposal.
That, that's not the argument. So let's just say it's a full trash bag, a green, big trash bag, okay? A 33 gallon trash bag and it's full of paper shred, shredded paper. I can get that into a one cubic foot box. And that's what I would argue. But that 33 gallon bag that's put on the roadside, if it takes up in excess of one cubic foot, you're in violation. You can't make that argument. We go on.
And I look forward to litigating that.
It's just a suggestion.
I just want to take this moment, if you're a member of the public watching this, do not dress up in camo and start dumping trash all over town. And wear a Craig Fishbine shirt. Do not do that. Okay, um, I think I'll go to the, uh, anyone from the public have anything to add to this discussion? This is, there'll be no action tonight taken. We will resume this, uh, on our January 5th meeting when Attorney Small will have, uh, some options for us. But if there are any public comment, we can certainly entertain that. Seeing and hearing none, I will move us along to the final item on our agenda tonight, discussion and possible action on a cap on the amount of money in the general fund. This is Counselor Zandry's item. I will turn it over to you, Counselor Zandry.
Great, thanks. Um, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, I, I wanted to bring this up because, you know, as, as I kind of stated in the email and, um, uh, Chairman Chertel was good enough to send it along to everybody, you know, I, you know, we, we've had different discussions before about maybe doing something like this, you know, a, a flavor of something like this. And the discussion always seemed to funnel around the idea that we couldn't litigate something like this or not litigate, um, legislate something like this. Um, and so I, I, uh, you know, I don't remember how definitive that, at, at that point was ever made. I, I think it was just a generalized comment. But then, you know, I, I came across this article, which I, I read in the mirror about the fact that the state law has the, has a cap on the reserve. And so it got me thinking about, you know, where we've got caps, you know, in the federal government, on debt ceilings. And this is not debt, obviously it's, it's the, you know, the 100% positive side of this. It's, it's basically building up savings. And so I thought about it and I, you know, I'm reading, reading the, reading the article where it says, you know, the state law caps the reserve at 15% of the general fund spending. And I said, you know, if we kind of take a look at where we are right now with $174 million budget, 15% of that is 26 million and change. Our general fund balance is sitting right there as well. So this doesn't hamstring anything that we've already got in there. It doesn't make it suddenly like, oh my God, you know, we're $10 million over. We have to spend it all. And it's not, uh, it's, the idea of this wasn't to make it so that we have to discharge it all anyway. I mean, the, the way that the, the state handles it is that when you, you end up in a situation where you go over, it's, the requirement is basically transfer the cash into the pension program. And, and you know, we have our pension paid at, I forget where it is right now, 72 or 73%. It wouldn't be a waste if we've already taxed the people, collected it, not spent it, and now gone over this threshold to just slide it into the pension fund. Maybe we get it up to 74, 75% um, funded, even though the general practices say 72 and change percent is fine. Then, then it actually still also plays into our benefit to the next budget cycle. If we normally budget X for, you know, a certain amount to be appropriated into the pensions out of what we collect in taxes, and we've already kind of front-loaded above that amount because we went over our ceiling in the reserve bucket, then we could actually budget less next year for that. And then put those monies into other line items where they're needed. The idea, the idea with putting this in as a ceiling is that it, it makes it so that we have to actively think about what we're doing with the, with these excess dollars. And you know, I, I, I don't want to get into the politics or the rhetoric about all this because anytime we ever have a discussion about this, invariably someone's gonna say, would you rather us run a deficit every single year? Or do you understand that a million dollars is, is a rounding error on a budget this hard? So I'm, I'm very cognizant of both of those things. My, my bigger concern is what we just went through in, in the last budget cycle. And I, I'm still waiting on the numbers for last year. We closed out the budget in June. I still can't get the numbers. And I, I don't understand why I can't. But I'm pretty sure we surplus because while we probably spent a lot more in some budgets because of COVID, we went way under on others. And again, these aren't things that, some of these things are not targets we can hit because things change underneath us. But definitely when we have a scenario where we're basically saving too much money, which sounds like a terrible thing to say, it, it, it invites problems for us as a town. Number one, we are technically taxing the taxpayers too much. Now, that's not done on purpose. It ends up being the positive outcome of, of budgeting well and spending, keeping, keeping the leash on the spending. But the problem becomes when we don't do anything with it. We just keep stockpiling and stockpiling for the sake of stockpiling. So, and, and the negative benefit, the negative outcome of that is people are not getting the services for which they are paying for in their taxes. I use the example of my sister all the time. She moved out of town. So all of the overtaxing she's ever been a, a victim of is a bad way to say it. She's, she's contributed to. She never saw an outcome. She never saw an extra road paved or a, a future year where taxes were tighter because she doesn't live here anymore. So the, these are the things that I'm trying to, to find better ways to tune up. The other negative piece of having too much of a savings account is when they, when they means test the town, when, when crises hit. Wallingford never seems to need any money because we've got this great big fat pot of gold. And it's, it's the wrong way to think about it. That we're gonna get penalized for being conservative with how we budget and spend. And we treat it like a negative thing because everybody else does it differently. But I wanted to try to find a way to kind of put some parameters around what we do. And I thought this might be a decent approach since it's something that we do already at the state. And if we were to think about it or adopt it at 15%, it doesn't even impact where we are today. We don't have to grandfather anything. We don't have to make anything retroactive or anything like that. It's exactly where we're at right now, 15%. So I kind of wanted to introduce it, let everybody socialize it, you know, and, and see if there's any support for it. So that's my introduction to it, I guess. And so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you. Uh, this is, uh, it's a good discussion to have. And I think we'll, we'll definitely tonight, at least see if there's a majority who want to move forward with anything. I don't, you know, I have a few quick questions before I go to the, the comments. You know, one of the, one of my, I have a litmus test for a lot of things. Uh, the first one is what do other towns do? And I ask this on a lot of issues. I don't know what other, I don't know if other towns have a similar cap in place or not. That would be something I would be curious to find out. Uh, so it's really just kind of, I don't know if you know of any, I know you said the state does it, but I'm just, you know, I don't, and we don't have to know that tonight. It's just something I'd be curious. And then uh, another question would be like, how do you administer it? So like, is it an offset of the next budget? Is it a, do we cut it? Are we cutting checks? Like, how does that? How do you envision it? Or is that, is that too granular? Or do you think we should just look at the concept? Cause that was something that I was occurring in. Because that was something that I was occurring to me as, as you talked about it.
So I, so, so I only looked really quickly to see if there were other towns that did. I didn't do like a nice deep search of it. And I couldn't find anything quickly. So it doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. I just couldn't find it. And, and I, I, I would otherwise believe that maybe because it's and again, it's not a problem. It's not a problem that other towns have. It's not a problem, but I don't think anybody's ever run, well, we've got too much money. What do we do with it? So, and again, maybe to kind of your point, what do we do when we hit that threshold? And that's why I thought about the pension, the pension. The pension is correctly funded by what, what did Mr. Bo say? By general, general accounting prac- practices or what the state basically says is a good practice. They basically say if we keep it funded to about seventy-two and seventy-three percent, we're, we're, we're keeping it at a responsible level. So my, my thought process to make it simple is we could say that, you know, if we run into a year, like right now, we're right where we're supposed to be. So technically speaking, if we were to, to as a generic example, come up with two million dollars more, we can't just leave it in the general fund and they have to come up, we may have to designate it to go somewhere. We may have to say it's going to go into project line X or it, or we can list a certain amount of cap and non-recurring things that it could go into so that it would be designated for those things. And then honestly, if you really wanted to, to quote unquote, game the system, we could, in theory, take the two million dollars, put it into a line item for extra roads. And then we actually consumed two million dollars out of the seven million designated in this particular budget. You technically could not do the roads and then the funding just rolls back into the savings account. The, the entire purpose of this is so that it doesn't, doesn't keep growing. I mean, as, as, as I've used in the examples before, I got one too many computer windows open. You know, we've gone from twenty million dollars all the way up to twenty-nine. We slipped backwards a little bit. So, you know, in the years that we slipped backwards, we could build it back up. So I'm, I'm just looking for it so that we don't continually grow it from like twenty to twenty-nine when, when the bottom line budget isn't as robust. Because again, you're, you're just feeding into that continual taxation of, of the, you know, of, of the residents or the businesses in town to what end?
Yep, understood. The only other thing, I'll go, the other comment, as I, as you're talking, you know, I, the other litmus test I always think of is, well, what, what would I do if I were mayor? And I feel like if I were mayor, I would want the flexibility to know that, okay, I'm going to spend, I'm going to build up the general fund a little more, so I have enough for the credit rating and I want to put a million or two million into the pool. So I don't have to bond all the pool. This is just making stuff up. So that's my other kind of reservation with this approach is if, if I were mayor and that's what I wanted to do, if this cap were in place, it would kind of tie my hands a little bit, say, well, you, you got to find another way. And I guess, um, but your example, you know, with the pension, like if you were mayor, you'd put it in the pension, you know, and that's, that's legit. That's what you would do. And I would maybe do, so I think we would all have different ways to, to look at, to address it. And I just, um, I'm kind of on the fence and that's kind of, that's why I'm on the fence, because I feel like it, it, you know, we have a lot of projects, you know, the, the pools out there, maybe the police station, one high school, there's all these things out there. Um, there's no shortage of ways to spend money and I, and I just worry about tying, tying any mayor's hands. You know, I don't know. That's just where my head is at, but.
If I could jump in, that, that's a perfect example. The three things you just outlined, we would bond all those things. We would bond every single one of them. And if we, if the concern was, hey, you know, the, the general fund balance is going to go over. So what's our solution? Pay down those bonds, make extra payments on the bonds, start paying them back a little bit early. That saves us interest, it saves us money and it makes us meet our threshold amount.
Okay, fair point. All right, uh, Counselor Fishby.
So, um, interesting discussion. The process actually went into place in two thousand seventeen when we had the bipartisan budget, um, that we passed. And, you know, recently, it was like three months ago, as a result of this process, you know, interestingly, while we're in a pandemic, sixty million dollars was paid down on the pension liability. Um, and it probably wouldn't have been used for that had that statute not passed. Um, but the state financially is in a mess. Wallingford's not. And I don't, and I agree with Counselor Chertel that, you know, perhaps handcuffing a future mayor or even the present mayor, um, may be inappropriate. I would want to see some numbers, some history, um, from Mr. Bo's, you know, if we had this in place over the last, let's say, five years, um, what would have happened? Uh, what would have been the impact? Would it have applied to us? The other concern here is, you know, there's a lot of talk locally about getting away from a pension process and doing more like a 401K where our contribution initially would, would be large, would perhaps decrease over time. So your, your pension liabilities, you have pensioners that are falling off of the system would decrease. And then you get into the question, you know, ten years from now, let's say, uh, we have more money than is needed, the pension's overfunded, what do we do at that point? Um, so that's looking at the, the long-term situation, because I really can't think of another place that you would mandate that this overage of income, so to speak, comes in, that we could apply it on a local level. So I'm not interested in closing the door. I like the discussion. But I'd like to see some sort of numbers from Mr. Bo. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Fishby. Counselor Marone.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I agree with probably eighty-five percent of what Councilman Zandry had to say, uh, as far as this process. Um, I, I think I agree with him. I think I identify the same problem or I, I see the same problem that he does. Um, in the way that we kind of stockpile money and we're sort of taking people's taxes and putting them in the bank. I, I guess I have a couple of issues with it though. One is if, if eighty-five percent say was the, um, or you set a percentage, say that this is the amount of money that you could have in reserve. So currently, we already take money from this year's budget that we're going to pay forward to next year's budget. And it's going to be an expenditure this year and it'll be revenue next year. So that's money that we're just kicking down the road from budget to budget. It's not real revenue in the sense that we didn't collect it in taxes or, or fees or anything. And it's not real expenditures and that we don't plan on spending it. So the problem I see is if you wanted to increase the amount of money you saved, you have to do more budget tricks like that where you increase the budget without actually spending more money. So, so that's my number one concern is that then you put this sort of the administration sort of in a situation where if they want to save more, they have to look on paper like they're spending more. The other thing is I, I kind of agree with Craig's point that there's a, there's a certain stylism to how we budget in town. And I don't necessarily agree with a lot of it, but, you know, the mayor's the mayor and I'm not the mayor. So he gets to call the shots in terms of uh, some of these types of things, like what we maintain and what we don't and how we, we save and so on. So I do have concerns. He's not going to be the mayor forever. So I do have concerns about how we would hamstring a potential future mayor. You know, in terms of a crisis or some sort of an economic issue or even a windfall, if we had a big windfall and maybe we want to put the money back. Um, maybe we want to give the money back to the people or something, or have, have a rebate, refund, you know, anything. So, so those are my thoughts, but it's a, it's a great idea, Jason, and, um, I'd like to explore it more as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Marone. I don't see any other counselors, uh, who want to weigh in. So, uh, before we go to the public, Attorney Small, I have a question.
Sure.
This legal, what we're talking about?
What a loaded question. Um, well, this, you're speaking very broadly. So, um, the state is the side, and I told you this got to this, to you people before, the state is the sovereign. The state tells us what we can do. We don't get to just decide what we want to do. Um, the issue of whether or not, I, I really would need to know more about what it is you want to do. But the issue, you keep talking about binding the, the mayor, when in fact it's really you're binding future councils as well as, because it's the shared power. When it comes to the net cap and non-recurring, and you can vote at budget time to use surplus in that fund to fund projects in that fund. You don't have to just let it sit there. You can do that right now without an ordinance. But I think my concern would be what it is you're looking to do, what are the parameters of that? And if you have the authority to do that, which is, could be questionable under state law. But if you do, whether or not it, it is an ordinance or it is a charter, because you would be binding future administrations and town councils in their budget-making authority. And I'm skeptical that you can do that, but you're really talking in a very broad subject, so I don't want to conclude that. Um, just outright. Um, but that would be a concern that if you have such a power, I'm not so sure that that wouldn't be a charter power as opposed to an ordinance one. But if you wanted, you know, gather more information and as you refine what it is you think you might want, then certainly you could take a closer look at that. But, you know, in general, you can't bind future, by ordinances, um, the budget-making authorities, which is not just the mayor's office, but also the town council as to how they draft and, and put together a budget, um, and raise money, so.
Understood. Two, just two follow-ups to what you said quickly. You mentioned cap and non. We're talking about the general fund though. I just want to be, make sure we're clear on that.
Okay, so you're talking about the general fund, putting a spending cap on the general fund? What would that be? Look like? What, so how are you going to do that?
Well, we're, we're, we're not there. We're still.
All right, you know that the, the cap, okay, so you, those are two of the fifteen percent, you're talking about the rate and state's rate of fund. Are you not? I mean, because the cap in the, the so-called cap in the budget is not, it's not based upon a fifteen percent. It has a formula and there's like, there's a list of exemptions of what's considered to be part of that cap, so-called cap. Um, that's a, I thought you, so the agenda item said general fund, but the memo, the email said reserve fund. So maybe, maybe we could start with, which one are you talking about?
What, what my thought process was when I was doing this is the general fund balance. It's the savings account. It's similar to the, the state law, the way that the state law is set up is basically says, you know, you know, there's a general, you know, the, the the reserve amount that they can keep at the state level by state law is fifteen percent of the general fund. So they can't build up more than that. And that's where my thought process was.
All right, you're talking about the rate, what's called the rainy day fund.
Right, general fund balance rainy day.
So that's fifth, it's, it is not that they can't go past fifteen percent. That's not what it says. It says when it goes over fifteen percent, they then have to, well, actually, it doesn't necessarily say they have to. The, I think it's the, um, controller or treasurer is then authorized to pay down debt, starting with the teacher's pension and, um, it goes from there. So it's not that they're not, the money doesn't necessarily exist. Okay, I, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about cap and non-recurring having too much. Okay, all right. I apologize.
I copied out the, the segment from CT Mirror, which basically says, you know, when, when they go over that amount, the, the extra amount must be transferred to, in this case, the pension programs.
Well, no, well, not just, it's a certain amount would go to the unfunded liability in the state retirement fund or teachers' fund. And then from there, and that's only up to a certain percentage, I believe. And then they have other debts which they have to pay down. Um, although I don't want to say have to, because my understanding is that the, they're authorized to do that. I don't know if they're actually forced to do that. I'd have to look at that further. I don't know.
Okay, I mean, I mean, that's really where, that's where the, the, the reintroduction of this discussion came.
Okay, all right. I apologize for thinking that you're talking about the other thing, so.
No, I mean, that, that's okay. I mean, again, I, I, I want to try to get consensus on this, because again, like I said, it's a nice problem to have. I mean, that, that we're in such good shape that we have to maybe be a little bit more proactive about, think about what we maybe could do. Or, or, or maybe, you know, we just don't do anything differently to kind of Counselor Fishby's point. Now, what would this have happened? Now, I can't do the same analysis that Jim Bose can, but I, I've got my spreadsheet here. And basically, each year that we have gone up, we, we reached a point where we, we hit seventeen percent one year. So technically, if we had been, if we had been in that situation when we hit twenty-nine million, two hundred fifty thousand, we probably would have had to shovel a little bit if we did it this way, shovel it into the pension fund. But immediately the next year, we consumed one point six, so we dropped to twenty-seven below the ceiling, which means we could have buffered it up a little bit. So again, there's, there's still some room in there, but just the idea was, my thought process was committed to something, if not the pool, if not paying down something that's bonded, if not, you know, pay, pay the, you know, a little bit more into the pension, since we're collecting the money anyway. It, it removes a future burden if the pension is more fulfilled.
All right, well, if you're talking about essentially controlling, you're really talking about dictating how a portion of the budget is spent. If that's, if that's, that's how far you're going, then that's, assuming you have the authority to do it, that's a charter change. That's not an ordinance.
So how can they create a state law that can dictate as we can't?
Because the state is, the state is king. The state can do that, that they are, they have all the power. They can create a statute that says we're going to do this. They can create a statute that says municipalities, you are going to do this. Um, I think they tried that a few years ago. So you, we don't have, we have powers, but we don't have just any power. And we don't, and we can't do something just because the state can do it, because they're king. We're not king.
Okay, well, I guess that's part of the discussion. And I, and I want to maybe emphasize a little bit. I'm not looking for us or the, the administrative side, the mayor's office to have more control, so to speak. I don't want to dictate to the, to the administration and I would prefer that they didn't necessarily dictate everything to us either. I, I kind of want to say, let's get a framework in place where we've hit a ceiling. Now what we, what, now what should we do? You know, it's kind of like when you max out your 401K and you max out your Roth IRA, where else can we save it or what else can we do with it? Every household, you know, will reach a different decision. I want to make you say, you know, if we could create something like this, leave it up to the administration to send it to the council, to have a discussion. Go, we've got a million dollars too much, what should we commit it to, rather than just letting it stockpile? That's kind of where I want to go.
Yeah, but keep in mind that you, the council, with the administration, you have the authority to, to govern those funds while you are in charge of the council. It's when you're talking about establishing something by ordinance or by charter, you're talking about locking in future councils and mayors into doing something. And so we just have to figure out, can you do it? And if so, can it be done by ordinance or is it a charter revision? That's all.
So, and, and I'll be transparent here in my thought process of why, you know, I brought the, I, I agree, we, we could do it. But presently, it doesn't happen. If we, if we tried to move fun, more funds out of the general fund to do something, we end up coming up against a mayoral veto. And then we've got to get seven votes to go the other way. And then on top of it, even if we were to get the seven votes like we got this year, the, the administration doesn't have to spend it. They could let it sit there and it rolls back to the general fund at the, at the end of the budget cycle. So we could go through the exercise of committing it, putting it through, having the veto, override it. The funds go in, then they maintain and they are unspent. Something like this makes it go and do something. It, and it, it, it would have to be something we all agree to, but it would have to happen because it would be a requirement under, if we could do it, ordinance.
I just, I, and Tom, I, I see you there. I just have one more question for Attorney Small. Based on everything you've said, I, my only, uh, confusion, I mean, I hear you on, in terms of we don't, we can't bind future councils, future mayors, how do we then explain, like, how does it work with the health insurance ordinance? Where we have a requirement that there has to be twenty percent of expected claims in the health fund. Is that not in some fashion binding future councils? Like, how does that, how did that get through, I guess, is my question, because I feel like that doesn't pass the test either.
I, I don't, I mean, you're, you're talking about the changing or making restrictions on the budgetary process. I, I, I don't know. I'd have to look at the health ordinance and what the statute authority is for it. I, you know, I'd have to take a look at it.
Chairman Savoni, you had a, you had a comment.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure that the health insurance ordinance is required because of the way self-insurance is regulated.
Yeah, that's true.
State reg, basically.
That, yeah, that's, the state regulates, uh, self-insured. And, uh, in order to become self-insured, we had to comply with the regulations, so we had to pass that ordinance.
Okay. Under, okay.
But just, but just to follow up on that, so absent statutory authority or permissible by, probably by charter. Oh, I just lost my train of thought. You can't. Never mind. Okay. I just lost my entire train of thought. Sorry.
Let me, let me go to Tom and then we can come back. Nice to laugh.
Thank you. And Janice, if you think of it, just start talking while, while you have it on your mind. Don't, don't worry about interrupting me. I have my notes written down. You know, so generally, I didn't, I didn't comment before and I had some questions. And Janice, you started actually answering them based on Chris's question. Generally, I, I'm in favor of the concept of discussion. The philosophy, the, I had the same thoughts about ordinance versus charter. We could pass an ordinance now, couldn't a future council or us ourselves just like, you know what? We're going to make it eighteen percent this year because we don't want to deal with, or let's make it twelve. I mean, we could literally just change the ordinance every six, twelve months just to suit whatever the current council's needs were. So it loses all the teeth that really I think the, the intent here was supposed to be. I think it's a great discussion point going forward. I think I commented in the last budget, but I, I felt like we were, we were probably getting to that, that tipping point, that gray area of how much is, is too much to have in the, in the general fund or the savings or any day fund, whatever you want to call it. But with the pandemic that I felt like I wanted to like hang on just in case. And something in black and white, whether it be charter or ordinance could tie that council and, and mayor, future council and mayor to a number that maybe doesn't work for whatever reason. I think it's, it's definitely something to talk about all the time. Again, the fifteen percent seems to be like a decent number for discussion purposes, but like I said, it's like gray area. Is it fifteen or eighteen percent? You know, it's a pandemic and an eighteen percent, fifteen percent in normal good times. I don't know. In, in previous years, I mean, that's the key, right? In previous years, there have been motions from the council to, to spend it down sooner when it was less than fifteen percent. And now fifteen percent, is that the number we're all going to kind of agree on? I don't know. And the trick is always going to be, as Counselors Andrew said, like, we got to figure out how to spend it. And if you put that in black and white and writing and ordinance, they could just change that. We don't want to do it on the pension, so we're going to put it into salaries or we're going to put it into roads or whatever. I don't know. I, I like the idea. I like the talk. And it's something that we should be doing anyway, just as elected officials and counselors. I think it just gets really dicey when we start to try and put it down on paper and black and white, especially when really to do what we're looking to accomplish. You would need to do it in the charter, I would think, versus the ordinances, because again, future councils just change it, swap it out. Janice, you didn't think of it?
I, I did not think of it, but I do, you know, I do have the statute on the, the cap and I, I just want to get give you a sense of how complicated this becomes. So what's not included when determining that amount of what a general fund expenditure is, they, they take out from the number, the payment of principal and interest on bonds, notes and other indebtedness. Expenditures for implementing federal mandates or court orders, expenditures for any federal programs. General does not include annual expenditures for the retirement system other than the teacher. I mean, so it's not like the state says it's fifteen percent. That's not what they're saying. It's fifteen percent, but we're going to really define how you get to the fifteen percent. And it's really a lot, it's a lot different than that. So it's not a clear cut, you know, the fifteen, you hit the fifteen percent and other things happen. Because you know, the state would never do it that way. So I just, I just wanted to say that, but I don't remember my, I think my train of thought was on the health insurance was that you do have an ordinance, but you know, the council's ability to change health insurance plans or how they do that is still intact. So it's, it's a matter of what you're really talking about. But that's it.
Okay. I, I guess we, so I guess we really got to figure out, do we want to move forward with any, you know, further, we want to further explore this before we give, you know, before we give, we ask Attorney Small to do more research. We have, before we ask Mr. Bose to come up to kind of pressure test some examples historically, how it would have worked. Before we do any of that as a council, is there a majority on the council who wants to keep this discussion alive? So I'd just like to sort of take a, take the pulse and kind of go around the room. And just tell me yes or no. Do you want to keep talking about this and keep at least discussing, exploring it? Or do you think it's not something you want to do? And I feel like Jason and Joe and Craig and even Tom have sort of said yes, but I don't want to start assuming. I mean, I know Jason because it's your item and, and goes at eighty-five percent. So I think that's. I'm just going to go around the room. So, so Joe, you're, you're eighty-five percent or you want to go?
Eighty-five percent, yes.
Eighty-five percent for all. All right. I'm going to go up and down the screen here. Tom, you're above Jason in my screen here. Tom, right, what do you?
Yeah, I mean, keep, we can keep chatting about it, but I don't think we're anywhere near kicking at the Janice for anything yet.
Okay. Well, I mean, just to, to research, not to draft language. I just mean to do research. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Chairman Savoni?
I'm fifty-three percent.
Counselor Tada, in the very Christmasy background you have going, it's like a Hallmark movie background there.
No, I'm a, I don't, I don't see this going anywhere. And I don't, I'm not really in favor of this.
What do you really think? Don't mince words. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Tada.
I don't want to be wishy-washy.
Right. Counselor Morgenstein?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the eighty-five.
All right. Counselor Testa?
Seventy-four.
Craig, you're, don't really matter at this point because we have, looks like you're, I'll just ask you. You're like, you always want to go last, Craig. So you're almost going last. So Merry, Merry Christmas. You're interested in?
I, I think, I think the discussion is healthy. I think that, you know, perhaps we learned something about the process and our capabilities, our powers that we have or don't have. If, if this was all we were meeting about, I'd probably be adverse. But, you know, I, I think the discussion is healthy. I think getting a little research from Janice is healthy. I don't know that I'm going to be supportive coming away from the next meeting, but I'm a fifty-one percent.
That was a lot of words to say you were fifty-one percent.
Vinny gave me the opening by going to fifty-three. I was like.
You know, I'm, I'm in the minority. I'm kind of with Counselor Tada a little bit just because I, I hate to, I hate to handcuff future, I feel like there's a process for this and it's called an election. I respect the discussion. I get it. I just think it's just, I don't know. It doesn't matter. I think we, we're, I'm over, I'm outvoted, so it's fine. So now let's get to the specifics. So what are we, what are we asking for? So we really, okay, so Attorney Small. What research are we asking her to do to determine if this is even legal? I mean, she just talked about charter versus, I mean, she, I feel like she kind of answered it a little bit. Tom, the Counselor Laughlin?
Yeah, and, and I'm trying to minimize the, this here. Basically, if we're asking anything of Janice tonight, I would say it's just, can we even do this? Would it be ordinance or charter? That's it. Because otherwise, I think there's a lot more discussion that has to be said. And that's why I'm on the positive side of it. I think this is a good thing to always kind of be discussing. I, I don't, I don't see at this point how it could actually work out, which is what I was trying to say, putting it in black and white. But I think we, I think is, can we do this? Number one. And if so, is it, can it be ordinance or does it have to be charter? And, and that's it. And if we can't, then it's over.
Yep. And can I add to that? I, I really, I agree with that. And I would like to add, though, I do think the comparison, not, not that I would ever contradict Chairman Savoni, but I do think the comparison to the health ordinance is valid because I'm not convinced that is a state regulation. I know that at Anthem, we do not require private sector groups to keep twenty percent in reserve. We recommend it as a best practice, but it is not something that we can make them do. Now, maybe you're saying a municipality that goes self-funded has different, they have to. But I think I would like to see that in writing. I'd like to understand that because, because I do think the health fund ordinance directly contradicts a lot of this, that we can't, that we can't dictate because it is dictating. And, and the other problem is we're not in compliance with it, as we all know from the last budget, which means we're violating a state, a state reg. I mean, so I think we need to look at that as part of this discussion because I want to understand why we can't explore Jason's item if we can, or if we already have the health one. So that's, I would like to add that. Counselor Fishbein, you had a comment?
Yeah, I think Tom is correct. I mean, you reach a crossroads and if it's a charter issue, it closes the door, but you know, i- if it's not, I'd like to know what can we do? And you know, there's various things that we could do that wouldn't handcuff. And we don't necessarily have to make it as stringent as we're talking about, you know, it could merely be a recommendation. You know, which would be a step. And then there's, there's a discussion with the administration as to rejection or acceptance. You know, there's a whole parade of things that we could possibly do here. But we got to get through that charter ordinance thing. So I think it's, you know, is it charter ordinance? And if it's possibly ordinance, what could we do?
Yep. And I would, I, I also think, Craig, your earlier comment, you know, having Jim Bose provide some examples or insight would be helpful, assuming it's an ordinance. So I think that's the other follow up. So those would be the two follow ups. Counselors Andrew, are you good with that?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it could be an easy, easy step process, kind of the way you just said, because if, Attorney Small comes back and says it's charter revision thing, we're probably just going to back right off of it. But if we find out that it's something we can do through ordinance, that we can kind of go to the next step and, and like Counselor Fishbein said, what, what would, I mean, I could do the numbers too, but I mean, I, I think it's better if it comes from Mr. Bose. What would have happened, you know, when we, when we went from twenty-seven to twenty-nine before we fell back to twenty-seven million? Would that have been a year we would have had to flush that out and put it to the pension or do something else with it? And would it have made the twenty-seven actually twenty-five? Because we would have had to push it out. And then if we were below the threshold, we would have just built up to it again and, and so on. So I mean, I think it's a good idea to get a good five years worth of data. But I mean, at the same time, it, it might also answer a question, you know, gee, what maybe happens right now? I just use the example that we're basically right at fifteen percent now. What would happen like in a scenario like this one where we've got certain departments or, or certain budgets that have overrun by maybe as much as two hundred percent because of the crisis right now and others that were larger only consumed eighty, you know, eighty-six percent of their budget because they're so much larger, they returned so much more in dollars and pushed us over the top. What happens then too? So I think that would be the second step after, you know, Attorney Small comes back.
Okay.
I mean, you, you might be better off presenting a percentage of the surplus. We come back within one percent sometimes and we're, you know, we're all upset that we, we took in too much money, but it's a percent. And sometimes we're under two percent. I don't know.
Well, when, when I use the term one or two percent, I'm, I'm talking about a, a dollar amount. So if the, if, if the, ah, I'm trying to think of a better example than the police stations. They're pretty big too, but Public Works is kind of big too, but Public Works might be a decent example. If they, if they came in at ninety-nine percent of their budget, they're going to return a much smaller dollar amount than if the Board of Ed came in, you know, at ninety-eight percent of their budget because they've got a hundred and ten million dollar budget. If they returned, you know, two million dollars, that two million dollars comes in, it takes us up too high.
Okay. So we are set to meet on Tuesday, January fifth. That's our next ordinance meeting. So we have, we'll have littering back on with some options and we'll have some further guidance on this item. And that's all I see right now, those two items for January fifth. So I'll just throw it out to the public on this topic because our last.
Could I just say? So I'm, I'm going to take a shot at this, but I have to.
You want more time?
Qualify this. You haven't told me what you would want to do. So when I tell you whether it can be done by a charter or it would have to be by an ordinance or state law doesn't allow it. I'm going to take my best shot at it, but I don't know what you would want to include in it. So, you know, maybe there are some things that you could do. I don't know. But I just want to say that it may be a very, at least initially, a more general discussion. Because I don't know what you would want to put in it. And until you, you tell me that, I can't say, well, you can do this, but you can't do that. Like you said, you know, you use the health insurance. Maybe there is something you can do. I don't know. You haven't told me what you want to do. So I'm going to give you, I'm going to start out with something quite broad, just so you know.
I think, well, I think, I, I, let me just, I, I think what Counselor Andrew is saying is he wants to cap the amount in the general fund as a, as a proportion to the amount of the overall budget. That's what he's saying.
But you can't do that for the few, and you have, and that's not what the state's law is. The state law is if it, if it goes over that percentage, the money goes, is authorized to go different places. I mean, so if you did, if you just say it's capped at this number, well, so what happens when it's a dollar over? I, I, what are you going to do?
Yeah, I think the state was sort of, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you, Jason. I feel like the state was an example to use, but I think the key is don't get hung up on the state. I would just say locally to, to Counselor Laughlin's point, you know, can we do it via ordinance or not? Can we do anything? Can we put any kind of rule in about the amount of money in the general fund and tie it to the budget? That's really the, I think that's the question for.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess, right. I guess the, the way that, that I'm looking at it, maybe it's too simplistic or maybe we just can't do it. You know, if the budget is X, whatever the budget is that particular year, because it'll grow, the, the general fund balance can't be any higher than fifteen percent of that. So if, if this year we're right at fifteen percent and the budget grows by five million dollars, there's now ceiling. We might be actually thirteen point seven percent of the brand new budget. So there's more ceiling now. If we run under budget and money goes to the general fund, it could go up to fifteen percent again because the general, the, the budget itself increased, which means that the dollar amount is not, it's not going to reach fifteen percent anymore. The budget, the budget at a hundred and seventy-four million dollars, fifteen percent of that is twenty-six million. So if you go back a few years ago, when it was a hundred sixty-two million, it was lower. So as the budget grew, the fifteen percent is static, but the dollar amount of the total amount of the general fund balance, the rainy day fund could increase because the budget increased.
Okay. But what happens when it's seventeen percent?
So that's, so that, I guess if, if, if you need, if you need us to answer that, that's probably another piece we have to discuss. I, I, the, my mindset.
That's really where the real power is. What is the consequence of exceeding the percentage? That's, that's where the real power is.
Yeah. So I guess that was my, my point was maybe again, too simplistic or too simply. Don't put it just in the general fund to sit, designate it for something like meeting the pension obligation.
All right. Okay. That's helpful.
Counselor Fishbein, you had a comment?
I just wanted to, it's, it's simply, can we cap the amount in the rainy day fund and dictate the expenditure over that amount? That's it. That's the question. Because then if we have that power, then we can talk about it goes to the pension liability, it goes to pay off construction projects. It goes, you know, but that's the question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anytime. Anybody, anyone from the public want to weigh in? All right, good. Did I say that out loud? Okay. All right. Well, I think we've, we've, we've beaten this horse. So thank you, everyone, for being here. With that, no further business. I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Have a great rest of your week, everybody. Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.